Radar O'Reilly, Oral 14 Radar.
Uh, yeah.
I'd like to call this meeting the Columbia County Board of Commissioners to order for this D-Day, June 6th, 2017. This time I'd like to ask our Commissioner Richardson to offer up our invocation.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today and Lord, we just thank you and praise you for who you are and the wonderful place that we live, call home. People that died years ago and families' losses and what they did to help ensure the freedoms that we have today. And Lord, we pray for the men and women that are still standing tall, that we have those freedoms. And Lord, we ask you to watch over them, be with their families as their way. And ask you to be with each one of our employees here, great staff. And Lord, we ask you to watch over them and keep them safe in all they do. Thank you for these many things, precious name.
Thank you, sir. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We do have a quorum here tonight with all five commissioners present. I don't know if you've looked at the minutes of our previous meeting of May the 16th. We'll accept a motion for their approval.
Go move.
Any items needing clarification? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Mr. Johnson, I see we have one item already listed as an addition to the original agenda, the bond resolution.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, that's my only note that we would have. The rest of us, please, ready for your approval.
Okay, we'll add that as item J-1. Again, I'd like to welcome each of you to this meeting of the commission, reminding you that these proceedings are videotaped. You'd like to have a copy of the disc and ask Ms. Crawley here to put you on the list. Or also, you can view these proceedings on the county website after maybe two or three days. Remind you too that you're invited to speak to this group. If you're not already on the agenda, we ask that you fill out a speaker form in the back of the room and bring it up to Ms. Crawley and we'll recognize you at the proper time during the meeting. Yerba's already recognized in his prayer the efforts of the people on June 6th, 1944. It stresses me sometimes that how many people don't even know what that is anymore. In the face of overwhelming odds and tons of live gunfire, they stormed the beach to start the occupation of Europe and the eventual downfall of Nazi Germany. But we do owe a great debt to those people and their families that suffered along the way. Special recognition, honored as always to recognize the employee of the month for June 2017, Mr. Fred Jennings with the Fire Rescue. Commissioner Morris, you have something for him? Mr. Jeremy Walden, our fire chief.
Well, it's a great honor to be able to recognize Mr. Jennings. Knight, based on his biography, non-mechanical, has more qualifications or really know what all of these mean, very impressed. Though they all are important and qualify you to do the wildest dreams. Also a member of the search, several of them. He's a dedicated employee, always displays a positive attitude. Especially has a passion for work. While we're here tonight, respect on that. Always opportunities to reach out to the public, provide fire prevention. Married, your wife's name is, two children. How do you do? During his time off, Fred enjoys camping with friends, watching his boys play sports. Heard that involved the children.
Here you think then, been at the company too? We went and did a fire safety class. Fred took the time to, I would say, follow his heart. Couple of kids that were based him around. And you know, you have a lot of kids around, you're trying to keep them all safe. Fred picked them up, put them in his arms, carried them around, made sure they were safe, took them back to the class. Dedicated to his family by far. Sundays and Wednesdays when we work, family comes by and if it's a Sunday, we wonder. Dedication to his family and the fire service.
Jeremy, we're going to reverse the order.
We can go ahead with your presentation. We're going to take item G-2B next, the results of the Columbia County Fire Rescue Boot Drive presentations to the Southeastern Firefighters Burn Foundation and the Columbia County Community Connections. Our fire chief, Mr. Jeremy Walden. Anybody wants to check, please come forward.
I'm going to ask all the firefighters that are here to come up too, please. I'll come on up. For two weeks every year, all of our firefighters, the entire fire department, stand out in the street in the sun and work very hard to collect money to give away to two of the greatest organizations that are in this area. The first being the Southeastern Firefighters Burn Foundation. And the second is Columbia County Community Connections. We feel like their service to this community is absolutely invaluable and glad to stand out there and collect. What they do, what they do every week, every year with this is absolutely unbelievable and we're so excited to be able to split $75,000, hard-earned money in the street between these two organizations. Ms. McKnight?
We have Linda McKnight and Julia Miller.
We're able to redo a bathroom because of what you guys are doing and that's huge. Have been more than full this year. We've had six, over six months. That's such a struggle. One of the young men lost both his legs and he's dived and electric. And I got to tell you, Columbia County became home to them. They came up here to eat every night just about. So I tried to get out to see you all while you were doing it and I just really appreciate it. I just, wow, I can't believe it.
Thank you all very, very much. I cannot tell you what it means, all of us at Columbia County. And I do want to recognize members who are here tonight, Paul Kennedy, Charles Bennett, Gaye, Rick Crawford, and one of my friends, Pat Grice back there. And what you do means, just can't even describe what it means to all of us. So thank you, Stink.
Jeremy, chief, was that an entire $75,000 from the boot drives? Everything's just from money being dropped in those boots when you guys are out there in the heat, in the rain?
Every dollar, that was from, that's what I'm standing on.
Yeah, that's quite a feat. We have a little item on our agenda a little bit later concerning the budget for Columbia County for 2017, 2018. And now we'll have a budget presentation about this from our finance director, Leanne Reese, and our county administrator, Scott Johnson. Who's first?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start out and then I'm going to get Ms. Reese to go through the, really more the internal workings of it. Just want to say that the staff is very pleased to be able to present you a balanced budget for this year. We've spent a lot of time working on this budget. As you know, we start that process in January each year, but working with all of our division directors, this year we included department managers, all of our elected officials, and it was really, it was truly a team effort. Kind of the highlights of that would be that you'll see that this budget is 2.60 higher than last year's budget, but there was a 3% growth in the digest. And even though there was a little bit of growth in the sales tax because of the volatility of that sales tax, Ms. Reese and I decided to take a conservative approach and to keep those lost revenues the same. So we feel like we have a very conservative approach to our revenues this year. One thing that I wanted to point out as far as expenditures is concerned is the decrease in new personnel requests. We were tasked with trying to keep the head count down. We were able to do that. I think really in the last couple of weeks, we had a couple of positions that we needed to add. These are five new school crossing guards for the sheriff. These are part-time positions, so they're not full-time. You obviously can see the impact to the budget, but it was our goal to come in here with absolutely zero request to the, to the general fund for personnel. But this was just unavoidable with the addition of the new schools that we have in Columbia County. We needed to do that. There's some other things I'll let Ms. Reese go into, but we're very pleased and really appreciate everybody's hard work in getting this budget balanced this year. Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. As Mr. Johnson said, we do have a balanced budget presented for all funds of Columbia County, Georgia. The general fund, all the special revenue funds, enterprise funds, capital project funds, all of them are currently balanced. We do have a contingency within the general fund. Our goal is to have 2%. We didn't quite meet that, but we were conservative with the revenues, as Mr. Johnson said. The contingency is currently 1.85% of the general fund, which is a little over 1.2 million. We did have a few changes that occurred since the last public hearing that we had. These are highlighted on the second page of the memo, just for your information. As some was within the sheriff's office, as he mentioned, five additional school crossing guards and an increase to the hourly rate for those school crossing guards. And a couple of other personnel items were included as well. The total changes created a net cost of $117,897 through the general fund. We did have to add two or establish two new capital project funds. One was for the 2017 general obligation bond. The other was for the 2017 to 2022 SPOS program. So those are two additional funds we have added. Other than that though, everything's balanced.
Any questions, comments?
Quick question on the building standards fund. Got about $600,000 allocated from wastewater?
Uh, reallocated from stormwater.
Stormwater, I'm sorry.
Right, right. And that was due to us doing an audit to figure out who was actually doing the work. So we want to make sure that those funds were charged accordingly.
Effect the building rates at all?
Any other comments?
So we have a handle on that now of where the workload is going, so everything's getting allocated?
We do, and we continue to look at that every year. It's always, it's very important to us and Ms. Reese and all the division directors and the deputy administrators. We're very cognizant of the fact of enterprise funds and not co-mingling funds. We are very, very conservative when it comes to that, but we're constantly looking at that, looking at workload allocations to make sure that we're doing the proper allocations. I still feel like we're very conservative in that area. So this was something that needed to be done, but I think we're, go ahead in the right direction on those.
One comment that Mr. Johnson alluded to about the increase in the crossing guards. The sheriff had a, he's got a twofold problem. One is he doesn't have enough deputies to cover all of the school locations at times if other activities are going on. And then he has trouble getting people to roll out a bid on a real cold or a wet morning at minimum wage. So we looked at both aspects of that, increased their salaries a little bit and to give them a few more crossing guards to free up some deputies in their cars or other activities in the county. So I think that's a good move to help the sheriff out in that regard. Any other comments? Well, thank y'all very much. Great job again this year. Then we'll go now to our consent agenda. Items that's been through the proper committee and received the necessary three votes to be put on consent. Satisfied with this list, we'll accept a motion to approve all of these items as one Any items needing clarification? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Going now to our debate agenda, we have a series of items and I believe we start out with Commissioner Richardson.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of Resolution 17-026, establish streetlight district in Whispering Cove, Section 2, bound of $7,236.56.
Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. Next.
I make a motion to approve the second reading, coordinates 17-05, visiting chapter 18, buildings and building construction, Article 2, construction codes.
And I believe this is to match the county code with the building code that we've adopted, building code we've adopted.
Rest of the property maintenance codes, filling in some blanks that we were.
This is the final reading. Any comments or questions? All in favor?
I make a motion to approve the second reading, page 06, chapter 22, business and business regulations, Article 4, massage service.
Second.
Actually, go second. This is really to match the state requirements, the background checks and a few other items that.
That's correct.
Make it more in conjunction with what the state requires.
It also requires the operator who gets the license to live within 50 miles of the Thank you.
All in favor? Richard Duncan, you have some management internal services issues.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion to approve the contract number Y-17-8-024 Criminal Justice Coordinating Council Incentive Supplement Grant, general fund line code 2252300.544035.10703.
Okay. What?
I make a motion to approve the.
I believe this is a grant directed to the juvenile court to help their assistance with young offenders without.
And it's an ongoing, it's an ongoing grant.
In jail, yes. Are there comments? All in favor?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 17-029, adopting an annual, an annual balanced budget for all funds of Columbia County, Georgia for the fiscal year 2017 and 2018.
Mr. Johnson, over the last few years, have we had anybody at all come to the budget hearings?
Very few public come to the budget hearings and very few at the actual passing of the budget. I'm always wary about that. We're either doing a really good job or people don't realize we're doing it, but obviously it's advertised and I feel good about this year's budget. It's been, it's been a task this year. We've had to really cut some things and really work hard on it, but hopefully we have the public trust when it comes to the budget.
Mr. Allen, I see where the state is up, what was this month, over 10% or something?
9.5, so.
9.5?
We were up four?
Uh.
Three and a half?
It's four, it wasn't, it wasn't four.
Three and a half, I think.
3.4 maybe?
Yeah.
Well, we should have plenty of money with all this.
Absolutely.
All in favor?
I make a motion to approve the service agreement between the Southeastern Firefighters Burn Foundation and Columbia County Community Connections, with the funds being paid out of the Columbia County Fire and Rescue Annual Community.
Question? We've had a presentation already?
And the money's been spent?
Well, it won't be cash until you vote on the service agreements.
She's got a bathroom to pay for, so let's do it.
Julia's already over at the bank.
Literally.
Banker sitting right.
I was going to say literally.
Rick's over there with a mobile thing, just like scanning the money in.
All in favor? Make sure we got that covered, okay? Mr. Richardson, we return to you, I believe.
Yes, sir. I make a motion to disprove, ask for rezoning from P1 to P2, care center for 50, parcel 006, the subject to the rated in May 18, 2017.
Second.
And I believe this was an application under a PUD that didn't qualify as a PUD?
It didn't quite be the definition, but still, with this P1 zone, they still get to build what they're looking to build, so.
And they're fine with that?
Yes, sir.
Other discussion? All in favor?
Make a motion to deny Barbara and Floyd's, Payne's request for individual flat and variance, finer flat requirements of chapter 74, 4275, one lot off of drive, tax map 01, parcel 036, .54 acre.
Okay.
Oh, we had a choice of two motions here and one to deny and one to approve. Mitch Slatter, give us, make sure I understand, this is kind of a family deal.
Correct.
We've got a limitation on a private road, you can only have four subdivisions?
Correct, four lots off of a private road, correct.
Do you have any idea where the four came from?
No, sir, I don't. I've talked to Chief Walden from a, from a safety standpoint, and that's about the only place we can come up with. If you don't have a county on road or a road built to county standard, serving multiple lots, it might be difficult to get fire apparatus down there. I believe the applicant has pointed out that garbage trucks do travel this road, mailmen travel the road, have no problem. Basically, this rule is in place to prevent somebody from subdividing multiple times and eventually having a true subdivision without having the actual structure, the infrastructure to support it.
Here. Chief, have y'all ridden the road, fire?
Don't know.
Is, is there a difference in your mind, chief, that you could serve four houses or five? But as far as your service to that area, is there any difference in having four lots or five? Is the applicant present? Come on up to the restroom, would you give us your name and address?
Pine Road in Harlem. My two daughters live at the end of Payne Drive, one lives in a house, one. I spent a lot, I spent $25,000 recently on that road. Where it goes downhill, I put concrete. Half the road is concrete. Garbage trucks come down there and turn around. And the fire truck has been down there one time. How he. How he turned around, I don't know. But he has been down there.
Is there room for him to turn around?
Actually, they can. They can. My daughter on the left-hand side has got a big driveway. They can pull in there and then they can actually back up into my other daughter.
Any, any further questions?
Two years ago, I was told by Mr. Fort that I could subdivide it. Evidently, he didn't know. I could divide it into two tracks. I want to build my daughter a house, that last track. Evidently, he didn't know about the rule that you can only have four houses.
Is, will these four lots be all family lots?
Yes, it will.
All the same family?
Mr. Payne, you mentioned in your notes for the, this isn't really an appeal, but you called it an appeal. That three of the five acre lots were yours? Do you plan on subdividing all that? Again, you heard the reasoning for this code is to.
No, there won't be any, there won't be any more subdividing. The two, two five acre tracks on the end of the road, those two houses are really on the only spots on that five acres that's really suitable for a house. After that, it goes downhill. It really wouldn't be, be useless to try to subdivide it anymore. And it goes all the way back to the power line. So that's where it ends.
Any further questions?
I have one for Mr. Driver. If, if we do approve this, is this setting the precedent for moving forward for somebody else that wants to do the same thing?
There is some precedent set, but every subdivision, every deal is a big set of facts and circumstances. So to say that because you do it here, you'll always have to do it? No, but can someone point to this and, and argument for doing it in the future?
Morris?
Could we hold him to five and no more? As far as anything in the future?
Absolutely. I wouldn't have any problem with.
Now, only four would be his.
Yeah.
That, if you were looking at this map, that, that article across from the, the parcel across from the red box on the other side of the street is not yours, correct?
That's correct. There's, there's actually four, five acre tracks and a two and a half acre track. The two and a half acre track is bordered by County Line Road. The one directly across this in red is the only one I do not own, or my family doesn't.
Do you own the larger piece? That goes way back? Would be on the right-hand side?
It actually, I'll let him draw, let us draw on it.
The one that goes back to the right of way?
All the way. Yes. As I'm looking at, on my right-hand side, my daughter lives, well, a daughter lives on each side.
There's a little horseshoe there kind of at the end of that road. You're saying they're both, one is a driveway to each of your daughters?
No, my, the one on the left, my driveway goes this, her driveway goes this way. The other one on the right driveway goes this. But it's all.
Right, that.
One, one part of cement.
Yes, sir.
One path. Mr. Woody came out there and did a perp test on the soil. It's all sandy right now. That whole five acres is, well, most of the five acres, pine trees. It passed with flying colors.
You plan to build a house for your daughter, sir? That was the hope?
Yes. I had a paper with me. I must have left it over there.
What, what mayor question about a second dwelling on the same lot, also in the report, mobile home?
Yeah. There, there is a, a mobile home that I own, only five acres. So it would be on two and a half acres and I'll build my daughter a house on the other two and a half.
What you're referring to, Mr. Richardson, is saying that you can't have an ancillary dwelling on the same parcel, but mobile homes do not allow that to happen. So you couldn't have, it basically needs the subdivision to allow the second house. We couldn't fall back on the ancillary dwelling to get to the second house. Does that make sense?
Well, you only have to have two and a half acres, right?
Right, but it's, the mobile home was the part that.
I thought it was saying that build a house, the mobile home's got to, got to go.
Well, not if you subdivide it. Alright. So if you subdivide, that rule doesn't apply.
There's no more questions. I'd, I'd like to make a substitute.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to approve Barbara and Floyd Payne's request for the individual plat and variance to the minor plat requirements, chapter 74, to subdivide one lot off of Payne Drive, tax map 021, parcel 036, to 2.54 acre parcels.
Second. And second, so I believe we rule on the substitute motion first. We have a motion now to approve. All in favor of the approval? Please raise your right hand. All opposed? But it is approved.
Thank you very much. My next step is now to enter county with a plat.
Yes, sir. Correct, Mr. Fort, and all that too.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Allen, I believe we have a public works item.
Sorry about that. I think I just closed that. Hang on one second, sir. Thank you. Didn't see that other page. I make a motion to approve Resolution 17-030, Sixth Supplemental Bond Resolution Providing for the Issuance of Columbia County Water and Sewerage Refunding Revenue Bond Series 2017.
Second. In a second, any discussion of this item? All in favor? We do have a legal matter of, that was a legal matter, wasn't it?
It was a utility matter and a legal matter.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would point out, I know you've already voted on it, but I would point out that this, by just doing this refunding, we save over $3 million in interest in the next three years just by using our good credit rating and what the water utility has their good credit rating. So it's, it's a tremendous amount of savings in, in interest that otherwise would have been paid if we'd have just left it alone.
Yeah, and that's considerable. We have a few more items to deal with. Last chair Duncan?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve hiring Jody Crabtree as a manager one in Department 5130, grade 23, at an annual salary of $50,000.
Any discussion? All in favor? By the way, what is Department 5130?
That's in the water utility. That's, that's a situation where we have a.
You, you go under code names and all and. Oh, okay.
We have a gentleman that has a ton of certifications already, but we needed to get that salary in line with, with his certifications.
Next item, sir?
Yes, sir. I make a motion to approve a contract with Anita Patel as the office manager slash executive assistant with the Development Authority.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Mr. Richardson?
I make a motion to approve $3,445 to Eric Nancy Webber, parcel 41, $4,666 to Brian Johnson, parcel 16, $5,445 to Mary Olson, parcel 42, $3,055 to Virginia Walker, parcel 38, $1,730 to Ebon Jackson, parcel 59, $1,000 to Jeanne Michelle Rogers, parcel 24, $1,435 to Azren Gilbert Lopez, parcel 52, $5,755 to Gertrude Vest, parcel 35, $3,115 to Charles and Brenda Doolittle, parcel 39, $1,355 to Bob and Peggy Peddle, parcel 43, to obtain right of way or easement for Boing Well.
Second.
How many parcels left?
Sixty.
A bunch?
Sixty, sixty. Just on that project. Got four projects behind that one ago.
Maybe next time you can just say, I make a motion to approve all those that's listed. A motion and a second, all in favor? Have any additional requests to speak or any comments? Have any commissioner comments? I believe we have a, our next meeting this month, of course, will be two weeks. And then the July 4th meeting will be the Thursday prior to the Ju, July 4th on June of 29th, just as information. And then we'll be, not have any meetings the week of July of the 4th. Any further business to be conducted here? Anyone have a notion that we should depart?
I'd like to make a motion to withdraw.
I'll second that.
All in favor? We are adjourned. The lights went out. The microphone goes off.